City Clerk's sound agenda, item number five, please.
Number five is the discussion of trail development. Mr. Carter Lucas.
Good morning, Mayor and Council-- good morning.
Is it that time?
Please tell me we're not there.
We'll be out of there before then. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I wanted to go through tonight the status of our trails program, get a little input and feedback from you on a couple of different components of that. So tonight, what I wanted to go through was some history on the overall program. I have a day-to-day chronology over the last 10 years that I'd like to go through. I'm just kidding about that one. Some funding, proposed plan modifications that we're talking about, and our next steps to accomplish those. So if you look back to when we began this program in 2007, when we became a city, the city had a nine-member panel that was put together, made of citizens, one from each councilperson and two from Jan Jones. And that committee was led by the Georgia Tech Regional Planning Program with the task of putting together an overall master plan for a trail system for the city. What they came up with was a plan that focused primarily on the gravel roads, and they wanted to use that as the basis and foundation of the overall plan, and then work their trail program out from that particular location. You can see in the schedule that the majority of the program was supposed to be accomplished within the first five years of the city. But what we found is that there was probably an underestimation on the level of effort and the costs associated with those trails that really precluded that from happening. In 2009, they then went and did an update to the master plan. And what this did was it looked at specifically each segment of road to try and determine what would be the correct side of the road, or both sides of the road, for that particular trail location. I can tell you, as you look through that, in most of the city, there is not a good side of the road. Each side will present its own special problems as we start to look at the trail implementation program. But there was a significant amount of effort that was done initially to try and identify the best side of the road for each of these trail segments. In 2012, we did a parks' master plan update, and as part of that, Morland Alta-Belly began to look at the existing master plan that we had in place at that time and potential modifications to it. It's one of the first times that we began to see a look at trails that were off of the right-of-way. So the original master plan, with the exception of one or two locations, really was talking about the installation of trails adjacent to the roadway. In 2012, we also saw a reduction in funding sources and a shift in those funding sources to look at more regional-type connections. So in 2014, recognizing that shift, we started to look at how could we make our connections to the regional trails. In this case, it was a connection to the Big Creek Greenway. We did a concept study in conjunction with the City of Alpharetta and the North Fulton CID to look at potential connections to the Big Creek Greenway. And while we have one that does exist now, if you go downward to Marconi, you can get all the way to the trailhead of the Big Creek Greenway, just most people probably don't know that. And so what we were trying to look at was where could we make those short-term connections, and then also where could we look at some longer-term connections that might be a better experience for the user? We looked at going over and under 400. In the short term, Alpharetta has a program to upgrade Webb Bridge Road to connect Avalon over to the Greenway. So that gives us an opportunity, when they make that, do that project, it's going to be similar to Encore Parkway, to have a short-term connection. Long-term, we recognized that we probably had two hurdles that we needed to clear, Georgia 400 and the Highway 9 widening. So we did look at potential crossings of Georgia 400. The going under 400 didn't seem to work out. There were a couple of locations that it was possible, but it was a very long tunnel. And so we looked at a couple of different ideas for going over 400. This particular one would be an extension of Webb Road, which would go across 400, no ramps onto 400, be a similar bridge to Encore Parkway, and would tie into Alderman over on the other side of the road, other side of the highway. You've got some limitations with that, too. You're still a long way from the Greenway, so there's got to be another connection from that point on down to the Greenway, but it does clear that one major hurdle of Georgia 400. Highway 9, with the widening of Highway 9, presents another hurdle that we would have to get across. Right now, we're looking at a potential underpass at the old location of Bethany Bend and Highway 9. So when the Highway 9 widening comes through, that's going to be a split intersection, which leaves the old location of the road as an open spot for potential pedestrian crossing. So we are talking with GDOT right now of the potential of doing an underpass pedestrian connection at that location. And then we moved into our CTP, and the CTP again started to look at the trail master plan and trying to identify those components of the transportation aspects that were most important for the community. And you can see in our initial survey that walking and biking was the number-two rated As part of the CTP, we went and looked at a number of different specific locations for bike and pedestrian improvements. When we started looking at the pedestrian improvements, there were a number of components that we thought were key, so we did a scoring evaluation to try and rank each of the components relative to each other. So we looked at whether or not they were close to a school, close to the library, close to a park, close to some sort of key destination or activity. The gap that we would have to close, so if you closed a smaller gap, it was obviously worth more points than if you had to close a mile worth of gap. Whether it was within an area of transit needs, mostly that's going to be in the southeast side, the Deerfield location. We looked at the amount of population that was served by those segments. So the more people that were served and could use the segment, it also scored higher. Connectivity to a larger network would be those places where we could tie to Alpharetta and maybe do a short connection on our side, but tie to five, six miles' worth of sidewalk or trail on their side of the road. And then constructability. Constructability is always going to be kind of a key that we look at. Some of these sections are just going to be prohibitively expensive or have construction impacts that we just may not find as a community that we want to endure. And so through a variety of reports and surveys, we looked at the type of uses that people were looking for on the trail. And so you can see from these, connecting to the regional trail system, we'll talk a little bit about that more in a minute, but exercise, walking, and biking were really the primary uses for most of the people in this area for the trail system. So not necessarily that I want to walk to work, but I want to go out and I want to run, I want to bike, want to take my dog for a walk, those types of activities. And so knowing that, what, part of the CTP, we went back and we looked at those individual trail segments, and we tried to piece together either loops or connections to parks that we thought would be attractive and achievable under this program. And so we came up with these five loops. So you had the Crab Apple Loop, which was basically from this area up around New Providence and back down 372. You had connections over to Providence Park from that loop. You had the Deerfield Loop, a loop out of Bell Park, so Bell Park would be the destination, and you could go from there and do a larger loop than what you can in the park itself. And connections among those, and out of that, the Crab Apple Area Loop through the CTP process was our highest-ranking loop. You can see on that list where they all fell. And that's basically where we are today. And so as we began the discussion of the implementation of the trail master plan, we began to have some discussions about whether or not the implementation of the master plan as it existed in 2007 was really what we wanted to promote as a community and really was the appropriate way to spend those dollars in such a way that they would be used by the most amount of people. And so a couple of things have happened since that time. One, we've got a different source of funding. So with the development of the T-Sploß, with the development of the Green Space Bond, with the implementation of the impact fees, we've now got a viable source of funding that we didn't necessarily have in the past. And so we wanted to make sure that as we approached these projects, that we use those dollars on the most effective projects. We also have seen a more, a higher demand in the regional trail systems versus the sidewalk connections. So while we see those sidewalk connections being viable for close pedestrian activity, like we have set up in our current codes, if you're within a half-mile of the school, you're probably going to walk to school, and you should be given that opportunity to do that. If you live two miles away, you're most likely not going to do that. So we want to be able to focus our projects in the right locations. We want to be able to deliver a quality trail program versus a quantity trail program. And with the Greenscape Base Committee, they are looking for trails to be utilized as part of their selection criteria when they're looking at property acquisitions. So real quick, from a funding perspective, when you talk about our current capital budget that we have funded these trail programs in the past, the T-Sploß, if we got all the way through the three tiers of the T-Sploß, impact fees, we're looking at close to $9 million available to us for these programs. That does not include any funding that may be associated with the Green Space Fund. So we could anticipate some additional funding from that, but how and when that gets funding obviously would be up to the selection committee as they move forward in determining property So just to back up a little bit, in some of the earlier surveys, we talked about the importance of connections to a regional trail system. So we saw that not only from the surveys, that a lot of people want to be able to be connected to that trail system, whether it's the Forsyth Greenway, the Big Creek Greenway, Roswell's Trail System. That is a very important aspect of what a lot of people see as a trail program. We also see that from a funding perspective. So as we look for alternate sources of funding, which I did not include in that funding table, they're going to be looking at regional opportunities also. It serves more people. Anytime that we can bring in additional partners in a funding application, it carries a lot more weight. So if we have Milton, Alpharetta, the North Fulton CID, Georgia Power, Air Utility in the world that has to get across 400, and that carries a lot of weight in any of these funding applications. So the regional connectivity is something that we really want to look at. It wasn't intended to be the end of the presentation, but it might be. And so when we look at those regional-type trails, we found that the trails themselves have really become the destination. And that's one of the things that we want to look at in our program, that the trail as either part of a Greenway system or a trail as part of a park system becomes the destination. The on-road, in-the-right-of-way trails really become those connections that we look at. And whether you're connecting to asphalt trails, gravel trails, or what you may see as the traditional Greenway, those are some of the components that we really haven't looked at in our trail master plan up until this point. And we believe that those are going to be important components as we move forward with developing trail systems that people will actually want to use. So in a lot of cases, our on-road connections, we see being able to connect those destinations, but we don't see a high usership on those at this point. And I believe that's true not only in some of the trails that we've built, even as limited as they are. We see that also in neighboring communities, where a substantial amount of money has been spent on these trails within the right-of-way, but the use isn't there. The use is in the Greenways, the use is in the river trails, the Silver Comets. Those really become the destinations. The park trails, the ability to, I look at Roswell as an example. Roswell Area Park has a mile-and-a-half trail around it. That trail is packed. They spent millions of dollars in right-of-way trails on Holcomb Bridge Road and Eves', and I may see two or three people on those trails. But when you start looking at them more as a destination and are developing them as a destination, they become much more viable and used by the community, I think. The other thing that we looked at was the impact that the trails within the right-of-way have. And so whether a user of the trail or just a member of the community passing through, the impact of the trail and the trail development within the right-of-way has a pretty substantial impact on the aesthetic and rural character of the community. So to lead off with those types of projects doesn't necessarily put our best foot forward. I think if we can develop the destination-type Greenways to destination trails, the connection in the right-of-way becomes of greater demand and becomes a more popular project. So to get through to these trails, the construction aspect of it in many cases is a very painful component. Even though you may end up with a beautiful trail, getting to that point is not necessarily the easiest thing to do. We have very few locations in the community where we can go out and just install a sidewalk or a trail with very little impact. If you drive our roads, the topography that we've been blessed with and the location of the roads makes it very difficult in a lot of places to do these trails without a significant impact to the aesthetic character along these corridors. There is, there's no way to switch sides of the road back and forth once you run into an obstacle. Once you pick a side of the road, you're going down that side of the road, and you're just going to have to deal with the obstacles as you get to them. So one of the things that the Greenspace Committee is currently working on with the Georgia Conservancy is their acquisition strategy and criteria that they're going to use when evaluating properties in the future. One of the key components of it is a trail plan so that they can understand how particular properties may relate to a potential trail location and its relationship to the overall trail master plan. And so while we've done some of this evaluation in our CTP process, you know, we have looked at this northern piece where the Georgia Power Transmission Line is. They've done some evaluation on the west side along the gas easement. There hasn't been a significant amount of evaluation on those, on those particular pieces to understand how viable they are as part of the trail master plan. So having said all that, what are the next steps that we're proposing? Part of it is currently underway with the Barge Wagner Evaluation of the Current Parks' Master Plan. So when we talk about developing some of the parks as a destination, a lot of that evaluation is currently underway. And so that's a key component of what we're looking for in the overall trail plan. Just to give a shout-out to Jim and his process, we actually have two meetings this week at 6:00, 6:00 to 8:00 on Wednesday night and Thursday night. The Wednesday night meeting is here at City Hall, and the Thursday night meeting is at our old location at Deerfield Parkway. So that process is moving forward. We also want to continue to evaluate some of these connections with Alpharetta. We've had some discussions with the PATH Foundation and the development of the Greenway system. And then the next thing that you will see coming forward, hopefully, with some discussion tonight, is going to be an update to this master plan. So Kimley Horn did the original trail plan as part of the CTP, so they've got extensive knowledge on the history of the trail plan and how they've developed what they've got so far, with some evaluation on these off-road trails. But we would like to bring forward a professional services agreement with Kimley Horn to start looking at some of these off-road trails, the Greenway trails, how we can integrate those into the plan and integrate those with other components, maybe including the PATH Foundation and Alpharetta in trying to get that connection to the Greenway. The Green Space Advisory Committee needs that plan by November of this year to coincide with the development of their other acquisition criteria. So it would be a relatively fast-paced update to the plan to get them some information by November. And with that, I'm done. Be happy to answer any questions.
Have we gotten a proposal from Kimley Horn?
We have. We're evaluating that right now.
Okay. Karen?
Several.
Go ahead, Bill.
Go ahead, finish.
Several questions here. In the T-Sploß Bond, you mentioned the three tiers. Of course, the total anticipated revenue from T-Sploß is somewhere around $34, $35 million, I guess.
Correct.
So have those amounts actually been designated in the three tiers for the trail system?
They have. They've been designated as pedestrian improvements. So in each tier, while we looked at a couple of those loops as the basis for the funding of those, the cost estimates, the way the agreement is set up is, just refers to pedestrian improvements. But there is a specific dollar amount identified in each of the tiers.
Okay. Several different schemes or routes that you have in your presentation here interest me, and I've been interested in them for years, particularly the gravel roads, Wood Road, Phillips Circle, Summit, Brittle, Cowart. And of course, with Cowart and Summit and Brittle connects the destination with Summit Hill Elementary School, too.
Correct.
So in, I know personally how well those routes are used as walking trails, riding trails. I'd like to see us give some priority to those. The one other major one that I see is up in the northern route, and that's the power line easement that goes from Birmingham Park all the way over to, was it Francis Road?
It does drop all the way down to Francis. Actually goes all the way through Cookett Creek into Forsyth County.
Comes just the border of Leaven Belter.
And the other one, since it's down here, it came up during the overlay planning sessions, was the power line easement that goes through Crab Apple and crosses over New Providence towards the landfill, I believe. I think, and I guess the question is, have we had any more discussion with the utilities as far as using those utility right-of-ways?
Not since our original discussion with them. So we did have that talk, just so we could understand what their position was going to be. But part of this evaluation would be to include the utilities in a deeper discussion in how we can really make it happen. They've been on board with some relatively strict criteria. I think Kimley Horn has had some experience in working with the utilities and has some experience working over Inguanet on some of those, so we're certainly going to utilize those where we can.
Karen?
Personally, I believe the wide asphalt trails in the right-of-way adjacent to our main roads will not be used as much as a trail that is at Birmingham Park or somewhere else would be used. I would like to see more bike lanes on those main roads so that, I mean, it can be tough at times getting, I mean, getting through certain areas because of the number of bikers, especially on Saturdays and Sundays. I think we'd get more use out of bike lanes with some kind of divide than we would on a wide asphalt trail. I think that the trails are better, are more of a destination point, they'd be better off to have them at Providence Park, at Birmingham Park. I would also like to see going from our gravel roads, going across Freemanville, to have something that allows you to actually get across the road without risking your life. I mean, have some kind of, you know, just something to slow the traffic down, to let people know that, you know, this is a trail going through here, they need to be a little bit slower. I think things like that would, and if we had parking for people, more spaces for people to park, I think they would use the gravel roads as our trails, and they are a great source. We just need to get people across the street safely.
Okay.
Carter, in all your research, did you guys come up with any quantifiable, you know, like critical mass numbers? Like, how long does a loop trail need to be to be considered viable? Like, is it 10 miles? Is it two miles? Can you make one work that's a mile and a half? Because, I mean, that speaks a lot to potential selection of candidates for, you know, either existing infrastructure or infrastructure that we may want to purchase.
Right. If we did, I don't remember it. I can say that from personal experience, a lot of the trails that I see used in the parks around here, from a, from a walking or running standpoint, you've got to get up to a mile or more on those loops.
Right.
So when you look at Roswell Area Park, you look at Webb Bridge Park, they've all probably got at least a mile of loop in them in some way. From a biking perspective, you know, now you're talking about longer distances.
Right.
So you're talking, you know, for serious bikers, you want to be 10 to 15 miles. You can look at smaller ones as criterion-type tracks. There is a, there's a group here that likes to do the criterion racing, which is basically go around in a circle as many times as you can in 45 minutes. So when I do that, I like the circle as small as it can be. So I'm sure there is some criteria out there. Kimley Horn's pretty well versed in all that, and we can certainly include that as part of our criteria when we're looking at ranking some of these.
All right, thank you.
Well, we did the trails behind Milton High School. I mean, it's only like a mile and a half.
Cross-country.
Yeah, cross-country trails, and those trails are used all the time. Number one, because this time of year, the temperature's about 10 degrees cooler than it would be if you're going down Birmingham Highway on a trail. So, you know, it's, but it's only like a mile and a half to two miles back in there, and it's used all the time.
If you make the pedestrian one too long, you get too far away from your vehicle, and people don't really like that. You know, I think people would, would run a loop two or maybe three times to get some additional mileage, but after that, it just becomes a little mundane, so, you know, mile, mile and a half is a pretty good sweet spot from a pedestrian standpoint.
Matt?
I'm glad that the Greenspace Bond Committee is looking at trails. I mean, there's kind of a Chinese wall between us and them as far as the rules go, but that they're going that route is a good thing. I think we all recognize that. I had a Georgia Municipal Association class at Vanna last year on PATH, which was fantastic. And I think they've, they've answered a little bit of a lot of the questions that are here. If there's a way we can get them up here to do a presentation on kind of what they do, especially with response to their involvement in Columbus and Carrollton, which they have the interconnected, you know, and it's not just, you know, one section of a trail, but how they brought the whole city together with the use of their trails. And what not only the trails did, obviously, they said, you know, build what you can, the rest will follow. That was the first hurdle they had to get through. But then, once they did that, then it became such a huge, much more than just a trail, a very interesting aspect of their community, and great story with that. So if you had a chance to bring them to talk about it, I saw you had it in the presentation, I think it'd be worthwhile for everybody on the council.
And we did bring them up. We had some discussions with them. They're, they're outstanding at doing a component of the master plan. So the construction of a concrete Greenway, they specialize in it, they've done it, they're great at it. But that's one component of the system that we want to look at. So as we put this together and can identify those places where they would be effective in, in helping us, we certainly will try to involve them. There's, there are a lot of benefits in bringing them onboard. But we want to have other components of the trail system, too, that are involved in this initial master planning phase.
Right. Okay, Bill?
Just to be clear, I guess, going back to T-Sploß, the three tiers in there, are those funds actually received at this point in time, or are they anticipated funds coming out?
They're anticipated, they come in on a monthly basis.
Okay.
So the way that we have structured the overall program is that we, we don't get out ahead of the funds. Our programs, our projects are all identified once funds have been received, but they do come in on a monthly basis. I think right now, our monthly income is just short of $500,000, which is short of our projected amount, but we anticipate that to grow.
I guess to highlight a couple of things, I like what Karen had said about the bike lanes. As we, I guess, I'd ask you to take a look at it, too, or if there's support. As we repave and look at our repaving program, that seems like that's a perfect time to actually add if we're going to do something. And from a safety standpoint, we've got more and more bikers. We've got a biking club that goes all over today. They pretty much try to connect into neighborhoods because of the safety issue. But on Saturdays, we see people all over Milton Roads, because it is so beautiful, but without having the bike lane off the side where you can accommodate one or two bikes and then have the whole stream, you know, we had the one fatality a year ago. I just think that's a good thing to look, potentially look at when we were going forward. And I think, we acquired something at the end of Wood Road, right? We acquired property.
We did.
That, to me, seems like a perfect place to get parking if we look at funds, because that, that actually would ease where we had people parking along the street. It would, and most of when we talk about the regional trail system-- It would, and most of when we talk about the regional trail systems, what they have the component of is they have a parking all along the trail. So, you can come and you can use that trail for a portion of the trail and then turn around like the Big Creek Greenway. I mean, I go there, but without parking, there's no way I would utilize it because I can't get there to get started. But they've got different stops along the way. And even with the connection, when we talk about connecting to the Big Creek Parkway, that would be another thing I think we need to look at is if we're going to have it on that side of the city, where the connection is, we need to have some type of parking or consider parking to actually encourage people who don't necessarily live right there, but would want to connect from Milton, a place to start. So, that's a couple of my thoughts.
Can I just add something if I could?
Sure.
I just wanted to plant a little seed here regarding this as well. As you remember, a couple of years ago, we used to have the sidewalks that go to nowhere. We changed our zoning up a bit to require developers to dedicate right-of-way for us for the future trails. This way, you wouldn't just see these things crop up. The result of that, of course, is that we are having developers dedicate right-of-way in areas where we, which were designated sidewalks, paths, trails, whatever you want to call them. And that is in turn eating up or they're forced to dedicate land that, to accommodate our current trail plan. Which, you know, if you, Carter and I visited a recent site and if you look up and down the road, it's very unlikely that we will ever have a trail or a path going up and down that road without just the tremendous destruction of the view shed. Not to mention the amount of work we'd have to do to change the slope of people's driveways and things along those lines because you have to level out the trails. The cost would be astronomical. And this is something, this is another reason why I wanted to make sure we had this conversation today and to build on something Councilman Thurman and I have been talking about regarding the large-lot development. There may be crossover here with incentivizing large-lot development in these trails and how we are going to go forward. So, I just want to plant that seed in your heads. I don't want to risk going off in a direction that we weren't meant to. But there is crossover here. What that looks like, I'm not entirely sure. But I am a little concerned that our current efforts might actually be impeding our ultimate goals of having the larger-lot development as it pertains to where this 10-year-old trail plan exists.
Well, I would like to, because, you know, the large-lot subdivision ordinance is something that I've been trying to get us to discuss for a while now. So, I would like to have a full discussion on it at some point in time. Because I think in order to get that kind of behavior, we're going to have to incentivize it. So, I don't know if we incentivize it by not requiring them to have impact fees that were park-related impact fees. Because I think if they have large lots, we can get away with some of the parking impact fees and not requiring them to set aside the sidewalks. Whatever we need to do to find a way to incentivize the behavior we want, which is to make sure that we don't have all of Milton developed out in one-acre lots. Because if we don't do anything, it's all going to be developed out in one, one-and-a-quarter acre lots as much as you can get a septic tank in.
And I think the point that you're getting to, Steve, is I think we need to nail down this whole trail plan so we're not encumbering every piece of property on the open roads out there that we may be requiring to have a set-aside for trail or a sidewalk of some sort. So, I think to be fair to the property owners there, then we need to come up with a specific plan where we're going to have these trails and where we're not, then let's not require them or obligate them to set aside property. I think that's what.
Agreed. And the other concern that I have is that our trail plan and our view shed are completely diametrically opposed strategies. You can't have one. You can't have them both. You won't have your cake and eat it too. We will destroy the view shed if we put those trails in the way, the way, at least the view shed as it exists now. Carter showed you a good picture on New Providence where, and I'm sure you all remember when all the trees came tumbling down. It's beautiful there now. Carter and I went and actually walked it and we did run into one person while we were out there.
And that's what's on the screen now, just for reference.
So, and there is a tremendous difference when you're standing on the spot you're looking at where there is, you know, maybe two foot of a beauty strip between you and the road. It's a little scary being on there when the trucks come rumbling by. And when you go further down where there's a power pole, you can't tell the power pole's there, but you have a good 15, 20 foot between you and the road, it's a whole different experience. Now, it does, depending on what your aesthetics are, you know, what you like, that's beautiful to some, might be hideous to others, I have no idea. But it does definitely change the character of your view shed. And it's just something that I want you to have that information and be thinking about that as we go forward.
Well, I guess the trade-off there is on these open roads like New Providence, the better option may have been to put a bike lane alongside the road rather than to destroy another 30 feet or provide another 30 feet or so of right-of-way just for a paved path like.
And you can see it, just to tie back into the grade there, it requires an awful lot of excavation. And in some places, it's much worse than that. So, in fact, there's a rail over there as well from where they at least did, where they did do the wall. But it has a significant impact.
Well, it sounds like that's the, one of the main points we need to resolve in going through this whole process with trails versus bike paths. Where does it fit?
And to be honest with you, some of those trails on New Providence are really pretty. They've done a great job landscaping them. But if you happen to be in that subdivision, you can come out and walk up and down. No one else is going to go there because you risk your life getting to that trail. I mean, it just, you know, there's no way in the world, it's where I live, I wouldn't walk to that trail with my dogs. I just wouldn't do it. So, you know, these trails to nowhere really don't help us out as much. Even if they're done right and look very pretty, they don't help us out as much as we would like them to.
So, the reason I'm bringing that up is just to add some level of urgency. Obviously, there's a lot more urgent things going on in the world than this, but some level of urgency into what it is we're trying to accomplish because it is having an impact. And even if it means just the dedication of more right-of-way, that may have an impact on the size of the lots that, because obviously, it's going to be the developer's bottom line, what they're going to do in there. If there's more room, maybe there's more flexibility. And we could obviously look at a whole host of other incentives to do that.
I want to look at all kinds of incentives to try to get the behavior we want, which is for larger lots, more like the North Valley, more like Tullamore, whatever we need to do, if we need to, you know, not make them do the curb and gutter if they're having the larger lots, whatever we can do to incentivize a developer to do two, three, five-acre lot subdivisions as opposed to a, you know, a one-acre lot subdivision, I'm all for that.
I guess there's a difference too between trails or just the sidewalk because I still think interconnectivity sometimes between subdivisions for safety of kids. If we don't want cars driving back and forth, you can go over by, well, King's Ridge, where they did a sidewalk, but they weaved it in and out of the trees. And kids use that. People walk from neighborhood to neighborhood. I see it over where I live. So, sidewalks can serve a purpose that may not be a trail system, but they still provide safety and it makes it, I think, from a neighborhood standpoint, you still allow people to go between different neighborhoods and get out and walk. If you live in that neighborhood, you've got a chance to go out. So, maybe it's not, in some areas, it may not be a wide trail. It may be we still require sidewalks where you have an option to actually connect versus the trail.
But a six-to-eight-foot asphalt trail parallel to a road looks like an access road.
Agreed. And we're hoping this update to the master plan will help us identify those areas where we can hit the home run in our first shot at it.
You think you've got a little bit of, you've got enough input from us to keep moving forward?
I do. And so, what you'll most likely see in one of the upcoming agendas then is the professional service.